You ready?
Yeah.
Why not?
Okay, good evening and welcome to the March 20th, 2018, meeting of the Town of Wareham Board of Selectmen. May we have a roll call, please?
President is Selectman Scasiotti, Selectman Slavin, Selectman Titlebaum, Town Administrator Derek Sullivan.
Yes, Town Council asked to be excused tonight and Selectman Tropiano is on his way trying to fight his way out of Boston traffic. Pledge of Allegiance, let's have Lydia.
Why he had you sit in the front?
That's what happens when you sit in front.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, there was a reason for my choice of Lydia. Tonight is her last meeting as a full-time reporter covering us for Wareham Week because she's moved on to apparently bigger and better things. But she is staying local and I understand there may be some negotiations to keep her around to still work for Wareham Week in some regards. So I just wanted to announce that, allow her to lead us in the pledge, since it might be the last opportunity she gets to do so. And to thank her for her work in covering the Board of Selectmen and everything else that happens in Wareham. So, thank you. Usually we're the reporters skull-going in the dead of night, so we don't get a chance to do this. Let's see, Selectman Scasiotti, any announcements?
No, well said, thank you.
Yes, dear.
Have you even looked at that pile yet?
Of course.
Is it in order?
No, never is.
Okay.
We basically just give some announcements. The weather forecast for tomorrow is pretty difficult. Most cities and towns in the area around us are closing sometime between 11:00 and 12:00 o'clock in the afternoon. So if you have any boards or committees or commission meetings, you probably want to check in, see what's happening, unless Mr. Sullivan's made a decision already.
No.
I guess that's no.
This is why you ask those questions ahead of time.
I want to be consistent. The Wareham Conservation Commission has already canceled their meeting. I'm going to just say that probably the other boards most likely are going to follow suit. Wareham Community Associates, their meeting will be canceled also. And just be careful with the weather. I don't think we have anything. We have candidates tonight on Thursday, should be no impact with the weather. That's at Slurino's, I believe it starts at 7:00. And I think that's all I have for tonight.
Yeah, I do know that the continued hearing for the 40B applicant before the zoning board of appeals is supposed to continue tomorrow night. I'm guessing that's going to be canceled. I don't know if this is really in the nature of an announcement, but I'm going to talk about it anyway. One of the things we've been dealing with as we discuss whether we're going to try to build a new school or not and go through it. Presently, we have two schools. One is the Minor Forest School, of course, which if everything proceeds according to the present plans is where a new school would be built. The second school is the John W. Deacon School out in West Wareham. And, you know, it's occurred to me that if we cut back to one school and it's located at Minor Forest, you know, we still need a way to honor the gift of the land, the significant financial support, and a whole host of other things that the Deacon's family gave to the town, you know, over 40 years ago to make that school a possibility. And so I would suggest going forward that this, if there is a new school built at Minot, that it be called the John W. Deacon Elementary School at Minot Forest. I think that's a way to correctly identify where it's located while paying the proper respect to the family that gave us the other school in the first place. So that's just something I wanted to get out there. Remember, we have an election on April 3rd? I think we have three candidates in the room. We should probably have the debate here right now. Thursday?
Thursday.
Okay. I guess it's Thursday then. Again, storm tomorrow, please stay off the roads if you don't have to be out. You know, as I remarked the last time, the roads were kind of washboard-y after the plowing, and that's because they're snowplows, not iceplows. When you drive over wet snow, it compacts it into ice. When it gets cold at night, the ice freezes, and guess what, it doesn't plow up. And that's why your teeth chatter when you go down the road the next morning because other people have been driving over it and turning it into ice. So please stay off the roads for any unnecessary travel. And I think that's it. Any comments from citizens tonight? Come on up, sir. Sit down, identify yourself.
My name is Jim Menees. I live on Cranberry Highway Precinct 4. You know, lots been going on about the Haver Marion Wareham Regional Refuge District. So, for clarification, if I could get some information on who Wareham's representatives were from the years of 2012 through 17 to the district commission.
I don't have that information offhand, but it can be emailed to you if you'll provide your address.
What was Ray's last name? I just want to bring it up. The representative was Ray...
Who was Wareham's representative to the district?
No, but on the district board.
There's the board numbers and then Mr. Pickles was the executive director.
I was always told Mr. Pickles when I asked the question four years ago, what's happening there?
Also, I would like that information. I'd also like to know how much in receipts we've received from the sale of the transfer station stickers during that timeframe?
Some of the information you're looking for actually wouldn't come through this board. It would be more in the form of a Public Records Act request, so that may be, that would be something that you would file with the clerk's office?
And how much it has cost us to run the two transfer stations during that timeframe?
We can get that from the district, but that's a district amount.
I think it's needed for people to have clarity of what's been going on over this number of years. And in addition, there's been a few changes to the station. Minor ones, but for leaps and whatnot, that's been closed off. I'm not sure why.
It's typically been open three days a week. Are you saying that it's not open at all?
No.
And other leads. Did you, there's a meeting coming up for them. Did you want to go to the meeting to ask them directly?
Well, I just wanted to let you know that that has been closed off at both places. I think when I give my $40, I get a, I get a contract and say I can get rid of A, B, C, and D. And I expect and would hope be able to do that as we move forward.
Yeah.
I understand there's a little tie-up there, but in a week or two, that should have been taken care of, in my opinion.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't think you get a contract with it, right?
Well, you give me a piece of paper, says I can get rid of all these things, and I can't get rid of those things. It's a contract, I give you money, you give me this back, right?
It's more of a license, but that's okay. Speaking as a lawyer.
I would say no.
Clarification on those things. Also, you know, you're reading the paper, and they talk about the fees and how much Wareham's getting charged and this and that. Well, there's no scales at the transfer stations, and they keep mentioning that. There's no scales there. The only scales would be at Covanta. And nobody sits there and counts bags, and nobody looks at the stickers coming in to see what town you're from, to differentiate. So there's just misinformation out there. So I don't know how it gets transferred and who gets what, or this and that, any information, but should be clarified. They've been using these places for 40 years, close to, or however long they've been open. Maybe 25. Because we did have town trash pickup at one time, if yous remember.
Yep, and a town dump, for those who didn't have pickup and there were...
The Carver Wareham dump up there, right?
Well, actually, there was one that led to the open burning law in Massachusetts because it caused a crash out on Route 25.
So, that's basically what I'd like, and so I, hopefully I can get that, I don't know, when that timeframe...
Would you be able to email what you would, you'd like? That would be, that's a...
Yeah, if you could email the town administrator, yeah.
Do an email to you as a follow-up, but hopefully it'd be on the recordings too, but, thank you.
You really need to also go to the clerk for information requests as well. That's the correct legal way to do it?
Well, for certain things, yes, some things are just in...
So, I hope that you would, you know, satisfy my requests and let the public know, you know, the answers to these questions. Thank you.
And some of those are through the district itself, so if you send us the, if you send, sir, if you send us the email, I can give you the timeframe for the next meeting.
It's mainly specific to the town. Maybe one comment was more district, but thank you.
Okay. Anyone else who'd like to speak to the board tonight? Okay, we don't have any appointments, reappointments or interviews. First, I'm just going to quickly jump down to the, well, actually, this is under your report because we didn't put it on the agenda. This was to accept the...
From the gift from Blue Wave Solar?
Which we accepted last week, but we wanted to talk about it this week.
Yeah, Mr. Mancini can come forward.
My name is John Mancini with Blue Wave Solar from Boston, Massachusetts. We're currently developing a solar project in town. I appreciate you guys having me here tonight. We wanted to give a gift. I know this was discussed last week. We wanted to give a gift to the town in the sum of $5,000 to be able to help establish monies to go towards trail maintenance, some tree maintenance, as well as anything else you may want to do with the money as it relates to the environment and how it impacts the state forests, for example. We also wanted to set up a time with the town to be able to do a community event there to help either clean up or do some of the trail maintenance ourselves with our workers. We like to go into communities and give some, give something back and be able to give an effort in doing some cleanup to go along with the projects that we support. So just wanted to offer that to the town. And we can coordinate with Mr. Sullivan and some of his staff to be able to come here and perform that work.
It's kind of funny. We actually did this Bass Ackwards. We accepted your gift last week, and now we're hearing about it this week.
The snowstorm threw us off for coming here. Originally scheduled day of Tuesday night, but we couldn't make it Thursday. But, but we did want to make the formal announcement and be able to work.
And we're very appreciative. Why don't we have a motion to confirm our vote last week?
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Okay, motion to confirm the acceptance of the gift from Blue Wave Solar by Selectman Scasiotti. Seconded by Clerk Slavin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 3-0-0, so it's on the record again.
Great, thank you very much.
In your presence, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care.
It's nice to have not just somebody come in, develop, and disappear. Get a little partnership out of that, but thanks, John. Really appreciate it, Blue Wave.
You too.
Okay. We have the hearing at approximately 7:00 on the application of Verizon, New England, Inc. to hold a cable television license that described in 207 Code of Massachusetts Regulations 3.034. Can we have a motion to open the hearing, please?
Motion so made.
Second.
Motion to open the hearing by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Scasiotti. Roll call vote, Selectman Scasiotti?
Yes.
Clerk Slavin?
Yes.
Titlebaum, yes. Okay, the hearing is open. And we have before us Mr. Underhill, who's the...
Member of the Cable Advisory Committee?
Just by way of background, we haven't been able to recently meet, which is why we don't have the entire committee before us tonight and didn't call a meeting of the committee. But the, there has been consensus developed among the committee, including Chairman Cicatelli, who's dealing with some difficult personal issues regarding this contract. And so the contract that was presented to the board electronically last week and is before us for signature tonight hasn't had a formal vote from the members of the Cable Advisory Committee to approve it, but it does have the endorsement of each individual member. There's no technical requirement because the Cable Advisory Committee is, as its name states, advisory. So, tell us about the contract.
So, I've got a couple of signed copies here from Verizon that we can sign tonight if you choose to or choose not to. I have put on your table there earlier some bullet points of, you know, of some of the things we've negotiated in the new contract. I don't know if you want to go over those bullet points, or you just, I don't know if you've read the contract, if you have any questions.
Contract, Matt, basically is, covers what we've had for the last seven years?
The contract itself in term is five years.
Five years now, okay.
Yep.
And no changes from what we've had before?
Just, you know, some minor changes. We do have some, the contract license term is five years. We have, you know, in the contract, the town is going to be getting an HD channel to go along with the three SD channels that it currently has. If the town requests in writing for that HD channel. Some of the other issues, items that we're going to be getting is the annual PEG access support that they provide us right now is 4.5%. That's going to go up to 5%, which is the max allowed by the FCC. We do, we will be getting a capital for a PEG access of $80,000, split up over three installments over three years. There will be an INET grant of $87,561. Again, that will be split up over three installments. Let's see, some of the other things, cable service to public buildings stays the same. You know, they will provide us with no charge, one cable access to all town public buildings. There's a, we now have a video-on-demand language that's in the contract now. Those are some of the major items that have changed from last contract to this one. You know, the biggest, biggest change is, you know, we're going from a 10-year contract to a five-year contract.
During the negotiations, the committee did push hard to try to get a longer contract, but this is just not the wave of the future. There are possibly some changes coming in the telecommunications acts. And so the cable companies at this point aren't really interested in signing on for 10 years. They want to see what Washington does, as far as possibly even further deregulating the industry, so...
There's changes coming.
Yeah, there are. It's just a question of what they are and what the extent is. But realistically, this was as good of a contract as we could have negotiated, both for the ratepayers and for the town, under the circumstances. So I think all of us on the Cable Advisory Committee are at least somewhat comfortable in coming forward with it at this time. Are there any questions from the board?
Matt, on the broadcasting, we've always had the issues with the hi-def, you know, clarity on TV. So this other station coming in hi-def will allow you to broadcast clear pictures, et cetera, because that's always been a complaint.
You know, part of the problem is Verizon isn't getting the direct link from the TV studio. They're getting a handoff from the Comcast. That's some things that we have discussed, you know, with the new studio, the buildout of the existing studio, I shouldn't say new studio, the buildout of the existing studio of moving the equipment from Town Hall to the studio directly. And then at that point, you know, we have had discussions with Comcast, you know, as well about, you know, either providing a feed directly to Verizon, giving them the direct, you know, you know, feed as opposed to a handoff from Comcast. Because I think that's where part of the problem lies, is, you know, Comcast getting the direct feed and then their handoff isn't quite as clear as it was if they were getting it directly.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Okay, is there anybody who would like to speak to the contract, either in favor or against at this point, or it's a public hearing? Yeah, come on up to the microphone, please.
Jim Menees?
Yes.
The PEG access fee, is that passed on to the customer?
Yes, it is.
So we have an increase in our fee from the previous amount to 5% now?
It's going from 4.5% to 5%.
Is there anybody else who wants to speak to this?
Did you have a beard before? Okay, that, no, sorry.
Does that become part of the minutes of this hearing now?
Maybe.
It's one of those nights.
I'm thinking, it's like, I do know him.
Perhaps we should limit the thinking out loud. Thank you. Is there anything else on the board? Motion to close the hearing?
So made.
Motion to close the hearing by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Scasiotti. Roll call vote again, Selectman Scasiotti?
Yes.
Clerk Slavin?
Yes.
Titlebaum, yes. Okay, the hearing is now closed. Can we have a motion to vote on the contract itself?
Motion to approve the contract as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve the contract as presented by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Scasiotti. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstained, 3-0-0. Do you have the copies there for us to execute? Let's just do it now and... While we're waiting for Matt to get them out, I would like to thank the Verizon attorney, Bruce Bousseger. He went through, I think, no fewer than three changes of people at Verizon with whom he had to deal with. Each new succeeding person essentially wanted to sort of start the process from afresh and look at the contract from afresh. And, you know, any delay in getting this done certainly cannot be laid at his feet. So we can yappet his client a little bit, but not him. And I'd also like to thank Wareham Community Television Director Steve Ruiz, who although having a vested interest in getting this contract done because it helps pay his salary, nonetheless showed up and advocated for more than just the PEG access fee. He also advocated and received some significant infrastructure improvements as well. Hey, we still have Judy as a selectman.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter.
Nope.
As long as, as long as three live selectmen sign it, we're good.
Yeah.
Okay. And last, I'd like to thank Mr. Underhill, who has served as the point communications person with our attorney, who can be very loquacious, and has helped to guide this process forward. We've done a lot, if not most, of the work from the town's end, so thank you very much, Matt.
You're welcome. We still need to get Attorney Solomon has to sign these as well, so we will get that signed, and then we'll have a copy for ourselves and a copy for Verizon.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you again. Take care, gentlemen, thanks. Okay, jumping back onto the agenda, we have renewal of seasonal liquor licenses under the provisions of General Law's Chapter 138 for the year 2018.
If it's okay, we'll just go ahead and read each one of them and vote as a block. They're all the same kind of license, I think.
Yeah, we don't have the one listed under Subcategory 3 yet for stashes. That'll have to come back next week because they just picked up. Or did they get it in today?
They got it in yesterday, I believe.
They picked it up yesterday. I don't know that they got it back in, so check the file.
The email I got was they came and picked it up.
Right.
Yeah, he was supposed to go back and forth, he didn't make it back, no? Okay.
Nope.
Let me go check and see here. Yep, you're correct. So we'll do that except for the...
All right, your motion will be for 1, 2, 4, 5, and 6 as presented.
Thank you.
Just make the motion.
Motion for 1, 2, 5, and 6 as presented.
Okay, motion to approve the seasonal liquor licenses by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Scasiotti. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstained. It's done now, we just have to sign them. That takes care of licenses and permits. Presentation by the school building committee. They will be coming next week to talk about the, their progress and coming up with a plan to replace the Minor Forest and Deacon's facilities.
That's good, because Patrick will be here for that.
Yeah, Pat, well, the other thing, I'm going to hold off and do some other things before we get back into this because I'd like to see if Selectman Tropiano can get here. We don't have anybody, we don't have any of the petition article lead signatures people on here. That's who typically speaks to us on citizens' petition articles, or do we? What are you here for? Why don't I ask that question? Oh, yeah, you're here. Okay, come on up. You're here for that one, okay. Yep. No, no, sit right there and speak and speak. Become very friendly with the microphone, it doesn't pick up when you're about six inches away or further out.
I think it's twice now that we've, I've known that we've done these, and somebody had asked about a public hearing, but we hadn't had it on those before. So there's no, no need that I know of.
No, I don't think so. So you have a, you have a...
Otherwise, I would have steered you incorrectly, so...
Yeah, exactly.
It's a learning process. We started with Derek, we interrupted him, and he helped us along the way. So we're really looking for more guidance than anything else, I think. We own the property on, what's your address, man?
Comusit, Conahasset Road.
Conahasset Road.
Yep.
Been in the family, Pam's family, for years. Anyway, in any event...
So you have a, so you have a lot that's basically split by a paper street?
A lot, and, and there's a paper road that runs through it. So we're just trying to figure out the proper way of going through that is. We are meeting with him from the planning board tomorrow.
I'll put the sub so you get picked up.
Okay.
That's okay.
See, these, these four lots here are on the back. And this is a paper road right here. It's not used.
I know, you look awful familiar, too. So here's Comusit Road, and then...
I live on Sippican.
You're on Sippican, okay. So Pam Ledge, so we're the Neils, or my father was Neil. And this is where the cottage is. This is land, here's our beach right here. So we own these pieces of property that are outlined in yellow. And then, so the paper road originally went this way and up the road to Comusit Road. And when this land was sold here, that paper road went away. So it basically just is a nothing road, you know, here's Comusit Road, Conahasset Road going down here, and then you look down. So we own both sides of it. And we've, you know, tried to just, you know, just not have, say that it's a paper, paper road right here.
Just trying to consolidate the property.
Exactly.
I mean, that's really the goal of repairs and that was.
Are you going to go ahead and make it one lot?
We don't know. We don't really need some guidance on that.
Somebody said that to us in the finance committee, we've never thought of it. This right now is unbuildable property.
If you were to sell...
Right, if I were to sell.
Sell, and you, and you eliminate the road, then those lots have no frontage. Could be an issue that they can't build on it though.
Well, they would have frontage on Conahasset, they just wouldn't on Cedar Island.
Right.
So this portion is what's eliminated, so they would have frontage here and here.
But this one here wouldn't have frontage.
Right.
Frontage.
No. Yeah, you would lose that.
Unless you sold all that land or something. I see what you're saying, but...
I just don't want you to lose your value or your rights.
Well, one of the lots has 1,524 square feet, so I don't think you're ever building on that one.
I already think the Conservation Committee would allow us to build in here.
Yeah, you're too wet.
It would have to be sort of on this area where the road actually is. You know, it would have to be built, say like up in this area if we had to.
Yeah, and looking at it, it's not like that locks anybody from going to it.
Right, no, I get that. It's all, because that's... It's all, because that's all access differently now.
So, that's what we're trying to achieve.
Yep. You know that when you take this over, you're gonna have more real estate, we're gonna tax you more. Okay, that's, that's the other surprise for you.
We're at the finance committee, and we said to the finance committee, we're really just trying to help. Trying to understand this, and we're going to attempt to build here.
Yep. Yeah, exactly, yeah, exactly. Finance committee here, Conservation Commission here, good luck.
Now, they know why it's so helpful, it was more revenue for the town.
Exactly.
Well, it's a paper road, too. It's almost as if anybody could use that road. So, it's almost people, I don't know.
They could, yes, because it's a public way at this point.
It's almost like, well, they just can come right into your property, or less.
Well, they'd be crossing your property.
Yeah, you know, so if we have it all as one, then that's...
Okay.
So, we're going the proper route, is this going the right way?
Yes, town meeting is April 23rd. And it's a lottery system, they don't go by the numbers on the warrant. The town clerk has a little thing she spins and a ball comes down and... Now, are you residents of Wareham, or?
I am, well, I'm not resident, I am a voter.
Okay, so you're registered here. Okay, good. Because you could still, you can still, of course, present the town meeting, but then you've got to get the authority through Madam Moderator of the body to speak to the, to town meeting. Okay, so you're all set? Yep, okay, good.
So, we have to have somebody to second the vote.
Everybody's been very helpful.
Yep. No, I think we understand what you're doing here.
Thank you very much.
Well, do you want to do, Judy, do you want to...
McNeelys, O'Neals, I'm sensing a pattern.
I make a motion for...
Wait, wait till he's...
You want favorable action, you want another, you want the old...
No, vote to recommend. Favorable actions. Do you have your grid? I'll take the grid.
Nice to see you again.
So mad about that.
I was.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for coming in.
Okay, can we have a motion to recommend passage of the article?
Motion to recommend to put the article.
No, pass the article.
Pass the article. People.
Motion to recommend by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Scasiotti. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 3-0-0. This vote, as well as the vote of the finance committee, actually gets recorded in the finance committee book that gets handed out at town meeting. And Madam Moderator also, for the people who are too lazy to flip the page, Madam Moderator also asks each board for their vote on whether to recommend as well. So, that becomes part of the record. So, you're actually all set with this until April 23rd? Have a good evening. Thanks.
You, too.
Okay, so we took care of those folks, we'll come back to the other stuff. We have appointment of town council. Typically, he leaves the room when we do this, he's absent tonight, so it's even better. We do this annually every March, the charter requires us to appoint town council. We're pretty happy with ours, as evidenced by the fact that we haven't done a bunch of interviews, so...
Our class containment has been, over the last four years, more than just correct.
I can, I can say that back in 2009, 2010, we were running half a million to $600,000 a year for legal representation. Even with a specialized labor counsel and Attorney Bowen, we're running a quarter million or less a year. We're getting better results, we're not getting, we, as in the selectmen, aren't getting the town suit anywhere near as much because we're getting good advice and we're, most of the time, we're smart enough to follow it. So, is, what is the current compensation amount? I'd like to see a small raise here. I think given the value he gives us, it's appropriate. 2,500? Works out to about 1 and a, 1 and 1/2 percent. Less than 2 and 1/2.
So, what does, what does that make it?
1,875. 1,875.
1,875, okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we hire Richard Bowen as town council for the next 12 months at the annual salary of $187,500.
Okay, motion to hire council, Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Scasiotti. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. It's unanimous, so we have that taken care of. Still kinda treading water here, trying to wait for our other selectman. How about the town administrator's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, we had the all-day budget hearing with the finance committee. I'd like to tell you how much I actually appreciate them. We, we had an original date set, needed to change that, which turned out to be the massive storm last week. And then, when we rescheduled to Tuesday today, it was originally, as soon as we did that, they started talking about the storm coming. Luckily, that's moved into tomorrow and Thursday. I appreciate all the efforts from the department heads as well. Mr. Campina's gonna have to come another night for the water pollution control budget. I would hold him and his family in our thoughts and prayers. So, that's really what, some of the items I have for you today, too, is the, the town meeting articles that are for the special, which are pretty pro forma for what's been going on the last few years. We have the budget transfers. Even though we have the ability at the end of the year to make the transfers, I think we should have the article on town meeting. The Lang, I think you've already voted, but this gives the language for it, which is to see if the town will vote, transfer sums of money within the budget lines as voted in Article 7 of the 2017 Spring Annual Town Meeting and further to transfer from available funds to said budget lines or to take any other action relative there, too. We know the next one will be transfer of free cash. We still have a remainder of certified free cash. The first one would be Section A, which is the snow and ice deficit. Last, we had just, before the previous storm, we'd just gone over the snow and ice budget. I am estimating last storm probably about 100,000. And my God, it's, March is supposed to be in like a lion, out like a lamb, but... The lion stayed. Just so people understand, the snow and ice budget is the only budget we're legally allowed to go into deficit. And you've got two forms, you can either essentially raise it on the recap or vote it through town meeting. I propose we vote it through town meetings through certified free cash. Our current budget is 335,000, which goes really quickly considering we average about 600,000 a year. The only problem is you have to keep on increasing that budget every year, you can't go into deficit. The 2019 budget proposal for that is 345,000, so just a minimum increase. It's basically, you can either, either fund it through free cash or increase your budget and not have the free cash later to fund it, it's one way or the other. So, we've gone through the free cash format.
Okay, Patrick says he'll be here in five minutes, so keep talking.
Doing good, is this a filibuster?
Yes, it is. Philer, anyway.
The other one is something, what I'd call a town meeting lesson from a few years ago. It's a Wareham Recycling Center, they've, they're coming back. They'd asked for some funds, I said, you want to keep with our, really, our definition, if you will, for, for capital, I'm suggesting 25,000 for them to really keep it going. That's the, that center functions pretty well. We also have a proposal to move the swap shed from Marion over the large one over to our recycling center. So, I think that'd be...
Yeah, because that's closed.
Yep, so, it's, I think that would serve our community very well. The, the folks that are, they're part of the swap shed seem to be our residents and they're very active, so I'd like to be able to provide them with, with that opportunity. They currently at the recycling center have a small swap shed, so this would be a much nicer and better one for them.
Yeah, I did, I did hear some street talk. People were chagrined that the swap shed wasn't taking place over there anymore, they're rather upset about it.
That's, yeah, the swap shed was very upsetting to some folks, so, so we're looking at...
Two swap sheds there now, or one goes away and one comes in?
Yeah, I would say I'd take a look at the operations and see, see what we, we would really have for them because the, the one over at the Benson Brook Center, it's a nice one, you know? You just, you can't be over six feet tall or you're gonna bang your head on the rafters, so... But it works with the people that are working within the swap shed. I don't think, I don't think we've got a few six footers in.
Okay.
The other item is something that we've really been experiencing, and we've talked about this for a few years, and it's, it would be $50,000 towards emergency management. We, our current emergency management director is Lieutenant Walczak. We're looking to make a change, not because we're in any way dissatisfied, Lieutenant Walczak, he is amazing. He's, he's done a tremendous job, frankly. We need him operational as a, for Wareham PD during these storms and emergencies. We've got some internal candidates for it, including one that was educated at Mass Maritime and has a background, and so I would suggest that most likely we'll make the change in that direction. This would now give us an opportunity to seek more grants because this, outside of just their day-to-day function. And frankly, when we have these storms, I think people don't understand, we don't have the capabilities for, for a lot of these emergencies. And there's sometimes, the last thing we want to consider is budget. We want to set it up that when these storms come in, where we have basically, we can call over to Shaw's or Stop &amp; Shop. Shaw's has been tremendous during these storms, Stop &amp; Shop as well. Shaw's is the one that's helped out multiple times when, when I've gone over banging on the door for canned, canned goods.
Cleaned those subs out last time.
The last thing we want to worry about is funding during these times. So, it's, that's why I'm suggesting 50,000. I know it's a lot of money, it's not to disappear all at once. It's also for potentially purchasing cots. We're looking to have it, sometimes you have grants that require matching funds, and we'd like to use this as, as an ability to offset with these, these funds. So, it's, it's a good chunk of money, but it's a good use of free cash because this is basically a one-time set aside that you can always, you can always hit. Just for, so people understand, we get reimbursements from MEMA. I think we just, we still got a reimbursement from Superstorm Sandy that was last year, we received the last reimbursement. So, you don't get it right away, it's not, it's not happening, so...
It's really critical that, like, the governor on the first storm, I think called it a state of emergency for the whole state. When they do that, I'm not sure people up there understand that we do get, I believe, 75% back of the extraordinary cost of that type of action. But what's really critical is, sorry, you have to have all your paperwork and everything exactly right. If you're off even by a couple pennies on something, you can't prove out, it basically goes and sits off to the side, you may never get it. And it does take obviously two and three years sometime to get your money.
And part of it, too, is MEMA reimburses for the first 72 hours. So, when you see us scrambling and trying to either get machinery or rent something to grind things up, you know, I appreciate the municipal maintenance director. When we take the, the brush over at Charge Pond Road, they've never been allowing anything that would be, you would consider, large limbs or anything that... But for the last few weeks, when they've been open, they've allowed that. And I believe they're gonna have one more day so people can bring in their stumps and such. Now, I want people to understand as well, this is not for commercial operations. Yeah, that's, I think that's what we've seen. If you've gone by Benson Brook in the back, there, I don't know if you've seen it, there's tractor trailers that have dumped, dumped large amounts. This is always supposed to be for residential. And so, you know, we get yelled at a lot of times from folks. Some of them, sometimes the police have to get involved. So, really, I, I understand, it's supposed to be residential, it's not commercial.
It's part of the way the management ran the three dumps, unfortunately.
There he is, the man of the hour.
Nice, nice ride from Boston.
Sorry, sorry I'm late. Got caught in this traffic jam, the city was gridlocked, like everybody was getting out now, hurried before the storm, you know? So, I had to come dressed like I am.
It's fine.
It's what it is.
You gotta get here, you know?
Well, we held off on, on some things here. We did, we did vote to reappoint town council, we didn't figure you'd have an issue with that.
You reappointed him?
We reappointed him.
Oh, my goodness.
He's not here tonight, so it was a perfect, perfect time to do it.
All right.
We did vote to recommend the petition article to abandon the public way at Cedar Island Road for the people that came in. It made sense, if you looked at their lot. It died at their lot line anyway because the access further down was, was created via a new subdivision in a different road. This thing bisected four of their lots. And, you know, we told them they're gonna pay more taxes on it now, and they didn't seem too, too disenchanted with that, so it's all good.
Yeah, as long as it lays out properly, it's okay.
Yeah, it did.
Okay with me.
What else? We, we did approve...
I trust you guys.
Yep. As I spoke with you and you were okay with it, we did approve the Verizon contract.
Okay.
We did the seasonal liquors that we have before us. And I think that was pretty much it. So, now we can jump back to Item B under Town Business, discussion and votes to include articles on the special town meeting warrant. Now, I have here the special warrant. Mr. Sullivan's got some to add that I'll have to write in, I guess.
Yeah.
But what I'll do, what I'd like to do is just go down. Last week, we didn't vote on three of the articles submitted from the Director of Planning.
Right.
Because we wanted time to go through them, have we had that opportunity?
Yep.
Are you ready to vote on these?
Uh huh.
Okay. Is there any discussion to be had on Number 9, definition of horses and stables?
No.
It's been cleaned up.
Okay.
It's a good cleanup.
So, we need a motion to include on the warrant?
So made.
Yes, so, okay, seconds.
Motion to include by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Tropiano. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 4-0-0. Next is to replace all of Article 13, which is the zoning protection portion of the zoning bylaw.
Yeah.
Is there any discussion about that?
No, I, I think it's okay.
All right.
If we have, we can clean it up later.
Yeah, I mean, it's probably gonna need some cleanup afterwards, but at least we'll get it established.
Yep. Okay, motion to include?
Motion to include.
Second. Okay, Tony.
Motion to include by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Scasiotti. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
0-0. And the third one of those, amend zoning bylaws, Article 14 relating to administration. Is everybody okay with that one?
Yeah, I, I don't, for some reason, I don't remember that one. Just read it, read it to me what it says. I just wanna refresh my memory.
Yeah. Oh, actually, these shouldn't have passed out. You're asleep.
You're asleep.
I'm on his game tonight.
That's all right.
Building officials, there we go.
Making money for the wine, sorry. That seat hurts. I did that.
Where the heck was that?
Where's the bag?
Remind zoning Article 14 administration. Yeah, but, see, they're not numbered on her here because we weren't certain what was gonna go. Stretch code, drive-through. Here we go. Oh, it's a special, it's on page nine?
Yeah.
Page nine?
Yeah, page nine, it's the one that starts with 1460, special permit, enforcing 161.
Yeah, this is just cleaning up how they process through.
Right, this is the special permitting process.
Yeah. Yeah, the only thing I hate about these, you know, is that we're giving the special permit process sort of, it's almost like having a...
it's almost like having a, uh... You know, when you give them specifics that they have to meet, you know, to give a special permit, doesn't give, it cuts their flexibility down. You know, you know what I mean, their ability to, to think and think outside the box, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I mean, if you look at the language here, you know, they, they shall not approve any application unless it finds in its judgment, so, right there, you've got discretion, when you talk about a finding in their judgment, they've got discretion. All the following conditions, the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood.
Yeah, you see what happened, I get that, yeah, I mean, they pretty much do that anyway, but when you write it down and you say something like that, the issue that happens, right, is that somebody will, they'll make a decision, and then somebody will sue them and say, "See, you, you violated the regulation, because that, it did adversely." And then it gets to court, and the court says, has to make a decision on whether it did or it didn't, you know what I mean? This stuff, it's what they always used, the criteria, believe it or not, is what they used. But, you know, when you write it down and you make it specific, you gotta be prepared that it's going to be challenged.
If you look at the second half of that.
Yeah.
Uh, that looks like it's been, excuse me, it looks like it's been updated, uh, for the Aldi's project, where they want the Wendy's in there, and that's talking about access, you know, crossing roads, coming in and out. You know, basically, if you have a fast food restaurant or something like that, looking at that to try and restrict coming right off a highway and pulling right in.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, I mean, and you and I both talked about that, and we agreed to that before, that was a good idea. Yeah, I get all that, I mean, I'm just saying, you gotta be prepared.
It's gonna, it's gonna require modification down the way as we go.
Yeah, 'cause when you write stuff down, you gotta be prepared that they will, somebody will challenge it somewhere along the way. And that's a very discretionary thing, and it's a matter of which way it swings, you know?
Yep. Yeah, to me, to me, the language, you know, requires them, you know, almost to make findings in the process of issuing the special permit, which isn't the worst thing in the world.
Well, it isn't.
Because then, then they've got a basis to hang their hat on, and that's harder to appeal from.
Well, I, okay.
You know, I think.
Okay.
But-
All right, I mean, I don't, it's not like I have a big problem with it, I'm just saying that these kinds of things can be sometimes a problem.
Yeah, you know what, we're both gonna be dead wrong on this, there's gonna be some third thing that pops up that, that we're gonna say, "Oh, jeez, we should've thought of that one."
Exactly, and we're not gonna know what it is.
We're not gonna know what it is.
But we'll have to fix that when the time comes, I mean, that's all we'll do.
I think it allows them to make the decision a little easier.
I want them to be able to make the decision using their heads, you know?
Yeah, 'cause the ZBA right now, you, you have to show hardship on a lot of this, and hardship is really a gray word.
Well, hypothetically, it's a hardship on the land, you know?
I know, but what they do is they also take hardship, and sometimes they put it on the business itself.
The requirement of a va- a variance by state law says that it has to be a hardship on the property.
On the property.
Right, on the highest and best use.
Nothing to do with the individual or their finances or anything else.
Right, it has nothing to do with that.
It has to be a hardship on the property.
Yep.
Unfortunately, that's, that's where it goes in the gray.
Yeah, that's where, that's right, exactly.
So, so I guess we're, we're essentially okay for this, for the time being.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna, I mean, we're gonna go with it, I'm just saying that somewhere we might have to fix this.
Well, motion to include.
Second.
Motion to include, uh, amend zoning bylaws, Article fourteen administration, by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Tropiano, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero. Now, I think we can move down to, uh... We gotta check this, because-
Did we put the stretch code on yet, no?
Yeah, stretch code, we voted, uh, last week.
I thought we did that last time.
Did we? Okay, good.
Yeah, we did after the presentation.
I just didn't remember that we had done it, okay.
The one we put on that we might not need on is the shopping cart bylaw, because remember you and I, like, when we talked the other day, as it turns out, the road commissioners have the authority both to adopt... No, that's not the shopping cart, what are we talking about? Shopping cart's fine, never mind, I'm mixed up here. I'm talking about the overnight parking.
Right, the overnight parking.
Never mind, brain cramp, I'm sitting next to him, it's contagious.
It's fine, that's not a problem. It's not a problem, we can, we, but the shopping cart should stay.
Yeah, 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 never mind, never mind.
And with that dealt, and with, and the overnight parking thing, we decided to let the road commissioners handle it anyway.
It really is theirs, it's not ours.
And if they can do it their way and have some teeth in the law, but, by using a finding method, that's the key to the ballgame, because these bylaws that we've been creating over the years, we never put any teeth in them so that you can, you know, you can enforce them. And it's just not good, you know?
It don't mean a thing if it ain't got that sting.
We gotta have a method to enforce the bylaws, if we can't enforce them, then what are we doing? Why waste that time?
Why have it?
Exactly, don't even waste your time.
Yep.
And that's the case, and lots of times, we find that's the truth. So, I think in the future, as we start to write these changes and things that need to be done, and they do need to be done, I think we should make sure that we consistently put in teeth into every single law so that there's something that we can hold our add on.
Well, I think it's critical that when we do anything like this going forward, um, I remember years ago, in the environmental police, they used to pass regulations marine fisheries, and it used to be, they'd have a meeting, and I was on the board for a while, would pass a regulation, I'd have to go ask the captain of the environmental police, "Can you enforce it?", and his answer was, "Sure, just tell me which one you don't want me to enforce", 'cause they didn't have the capability, either by staff, et cetera.
Well, right.
So, that's a question we should, you know, exactly, we should be asking, "Can we do this?"
We're gonna have an enforcement officer soon, are we not?
That's part of the Cedar grant.
Right, so it's gonna happen pretty soon.
But I think we need to go back and look at everything we've put in place and see.
Yeah.
Is it enforceable as written?
And the thing is, is we may have to shift some of the enforcement to this individual, that he doesn't have the right to enforce now. You know what I mean, it, put it into the purview of the enforcement individual, you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
That probably requires a new bylaw.
It might require a little tweak here and there to make it work.
Yeah, just, there is one more article here that doesn't appear on our grid.
Yeah.
Uh, this was something actually that, uh, I know Director Buckland had, had forwarded out a week or two ago, but for some reason, it hadn't made it onto the grid. If you flip to page eleven, uh, on your draft warrants, it's amend zoning bylaws, Article sixteen definitions.
Yeah, that's just for the stretch code.
No, that's above the stretch code.
Oh, it's, it's just that little thing by itself, that's right.
Yep, it's just that, for the floor area ratio.
Vote to amend the zoning bylaw definition sixteen, floor area.
This was among the ones that he did send out.
Informing use in law, a copy of which is on file in the clerk's office. See, I, it's a pro, I mean, if it's on file in the clerk's office, we should actually see the whole thing.
Yep.
It's kinda hard to do.
No, but he did send it out.
I didn't see it.
It was part of the package he sent out, I believe.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I didn't see it.
Check it.
Yeah, let me check it right now. Let me just take a peek here. 'Cause I did get something from him, but I, I don't remember it being... Where is he?
Yeah, they had sent out the vocabulary stuff. It was in the email.
Is it in yours, Alan?
It was, I think I moved it unfortunately.
I don't see it, I don't see it here. And I, I have this one from the, um, you know, he has several here, actually, over, over the course of time, for, um, the master plan and so on, and the copies of the master plan, and some things like that, but I don't see anything else. So, maybe you could get it sent to us, Peter.
Yeah, the only thing is, is we're gonna close the warrant tonight, so-
Are we gonna close it?
Yeah.
Supposed to.
Well, we can put it on, and then when we go to-
Recommend.
Recommend, we'll, we'll deal with it that way.
Yeah, okay.
All right?
Yep.
Motion to include.
Second.
Okay, motion to include, uh, amend zoning bylaws, Article sixteen, by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Tropiano, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that's on by four zero zero. And I think now, we can take up the, the extra ones that Derek has for us.
Do, I need to.
Just Derek have.
Do I need to read it all out again? Here's, uh-
While he's talking, I'm gonna go through and tick them off, my warrant here, so that...
Oh, he's got a handout, ooh.
I know you like this.
You know, when I was a kid, I used to love handouts in school, because, do you remember how a mimeograph machine used to make the paper smell? I used to love that smell.
Hey, hey, Patrick, no, no, I don't.
You don't, you don't remember mimeograph machines? That's right, you probably don't, yeah, you probably don't.
That was kindergarten.
Uh, it had a neatest smell, especially when they first came off, and I used to love that smell for some reason.
It was like airplane glue.
Huh?
It was like airplane glue.
Yeah, well, it didn't make you high or anything, it just had a neat kinda smell.
No, it made you happy.
So, the first, the first one shows the language for the budget transfers, and, uh, Selectman Tropiano, as I said before, through the Municipal Modernization Act, yes, we can, you know, within the end of the year, plus fifteen days into the next one, but we might as well, if we, we've got something that we know of, let's bring it to town meeting, let the residents vote on it.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanna bring it, that's great.
Yeah.
It makes it transparent, it's much better that way.
The next one is to fun-
Makes people happy, too.
I, I don't know that that's true.
Well, it does, I mean, they like to see it, so, you know?
I rarely find things that do make people happy nowadays, but, the, uh, the next item is fund the parking program, that's one that we have on, annually, there's the, we probably could get a, we're gonna get away with less funding, because last year, we have a little bit left over, plus we hit the, um, we paid about approximately twenty-five thousand dollars for the solar trash compactors, so I think we're, instead of the eighty thousand, probably looking in the sixty thousand dollar range with some of the, the carryover, and that funds all the operations, and that can usually carry over into the next fiscal as well.
We're gonna need any new signs, signs, we have to update some of them, 'cause there's some issues on some of the signs for time.
Yeah, the, I mean, it's, well, we've put, they're not the best looking, you put stickers on before, but we have our own, we have, we make our own signs, actually.
If we don't get the pier fixed pretty soon, we might have nothing to park on.
Well, that's the other thing, that's gonna be part of the capital, but frankly, we probably, the, the piers that were from the storm, we know that they were denied through the insurance claim due to storm surge, um, which is really unfortunate.
How about when he, he declared it a disaster, though, can we get some money that way?
Well, this was the, uh, we can try and get his part, but again, we need to fix these for the summer, and Gary's, I mean, we're, we're a bit up the creek on these, and this was the October storm, right after October town meeting that hammered. Um, so, the, uh, you know, we're looking at, and probably, these are just to make it limp along, is probably thirty thousand dollars, but we need to replace those fingers anyways, 'cause they're the concrete ones that, and they've outlived their useful life. And they've, they've done a great job, their, their lifespan's been fantastic.
They're not safe now.
Yeah, so...
Okay.
Um, so, the next one then, there'll be the spring FY eighteen capital plan, which, so, this is the last capital plan, and I've got some items, I've been working with the department heads, which is IT, something for EMS, police, so we're running the, the gamut, we have some leftover free cash, we're gonna roll over at least seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in free cash, uh, we, we've been starting that as basically part of the policy, doing it every year, so if you have a lean year of receipts and such, you're not having a negative, a negative free cash year.
Are you, um, I saw, did we get two hundred thousand dollars for new buses again?
So-
The old amount?
That's a grant.
Was that the old grant?
No, this was a new round that had been, they'd put forward, uh, we got it again, on, it's unfortunate, it's good, but unfortunate. So, just so everybody understands, it's twenty thousand dollars to, per bus, towards ten buses, that's how you get the two hundred thousand. However, we either have to buy or borrow for the, the rest of the roughly seventy thousand, so you're talking about seven hundred thousand dollars worth of borrowing.
Which is what we did the last time.
Right. We redid, we did the last time within eighteen months, I don't know, I don't believe we have the capacity to do the same thing.
I don't think we do.
Especially, we're going to be looking for borrowing for the, mine for, I mean, the DECA's portables. You know, which, you know, that could be roughly almost the same exact money. Uh, I'm looking at free cash, I think that we can purchase a couple and take the grant, and we'll just have to return the rest of them, just so everybody understands, the maximum we can get per bus on this is twenty thousand dollars, so...
And what do the buses cost?
About ninety thousand.
About ninety, yeah, and it's going to depend on what you're, what you're taking off, if you have one of the, uh, my understanding, it's mostly the, the large, the large old diesel buses, you know, the seventy, seventy student capacity.
Yeah, 'cause it's ZBA grant, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, they just, they're looking for them to be upgraded as far as their-
New diesel.
Right, um, you know, I think they applied for this roughly, maybe over six months ago, so, what a difference six months makes, so...
We're at the grant, at the, at the end of the grant cycle, too, though.
Right, so we have to, if, if this goes to town meeting, right, and we're almost at, we don't get the funds for it, we cannot, we can't go forward, last time they led us, uh, they gave us some extra time, because part of the issue is, when they make these awards, I think the last one, it happened in between town meeting cycles or right after we'd closed a warrant, we had no capacity to put, we weren't gonna hold a special town meeting for it either, so, uh...
Is this something can be done in October?
We wouldn't, I, I believe we wouldn't have the funds.
Would be not soon, it would be too late?
It would be too late for the round.
So, I think our best bet is to, is to go forward and try and get at least a handful of them with the, with the free cash that, that we have, because some will be better than nothing on it.
And these buses that are being replaced are quite old, I think they're fifteen years or more.
Now, this, um, the school transportation director had applied for this, I do wanna put, let it right know, Mr. Menard is wholly in favor of him, as he's responsible for fixing all those fifteen-year-old buses, and would like nothing more than to have them off the road, so...
I believe, if I remember right, when we did the studies back about five, six years ago, when the bus reaches seven years of age, it's the, what we call the break-even tipping point, where the repairs, et cetera, become more expensive than buying a new bus overall.
Imagine when they're fifteen, double that.
Uh, no, it's not fun, then.
Okay, uh, well, we have three to put on from him, then? The budget transfers, we already voted on before, we just didn't have the, you know, the actual language.
Who to put the town administrators' warrants articles on?
Three articles on?
Second.
Okay, motion to put fund parking programs, spring fiscal eighteen capital, and-
Transfer-
Transfer free cash on warrant.
Second.
I'd say-
Motion by-
Me.
Selectman Tropiano, seconded by Clerk Slavin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, and that takes care of that, I'm just gonna jot these on here on the form for Janet.
I have-
And I get the warrant done and out tomorrow before it starts snowing.
I have one, I'm not sure we can do anything with it or not, uh, Community Events Committee has on their membership listing for a Cedar member, uh, and only three at-large members, we have someone who's applied, who would be at-large. There's the board wanting to take up at this time, to put on a special, changing the makeup of that particular board. 'Cause Cedar's been discontinued, basically.
Cedar has, and I don't know that anybody from the redevelopment authority needs to be on there.
I think it-
Is there something that, that, will the chairman at least send an email saying that she's in support of this?
Uh, it's in our minutes of our meeting already, it's actually the meeting before.
Is this a request, was this, was the-
It was a request back then, I had mentioned it before.
That's fine.
Which board is it?
Community Events Committee. We, we have five members total, we're down to four, and we can't put in that large member on, because it says it's supposed to be a Cedar board member. And I would say that anybody who's gonna be involved with the redevelopment authority is gonna be very busy going forward.
Yeah, they're not gonna have time for community events.
Not for this.
You have to go back and resend, resend the, the other article that created that, so that would have to go-
You wouldn't have to resend, it's just to amend it. It's in the bylaw somewhere, their membership, so you just have to amend the bylaw.
It's just, it's part of a special act, though, so it's-
Well-
We'll see.
I don't think you're gonna have to amend the special act, the state's not gonna care.
Well, I hope not, 'cause it's-
With the membership, I believe, when I looked at, I had questions about what they could do last year, and I pulled both out, and I'm pretty sure that their membership is established via the bylaws.
We'll go have-
You know what, we'll just, we'll do, we'll do, we'll do a loose placeholder, we'll just call it, uh, amend Community Events Committee membership.
Okay.
How's that? And then if, if this is that, if it's, if it's a special act that we gotta do, we can ask for it.
So moved.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Thank you.
You're gonna hurry to get supper, aren't you?
No, no, I'm fine.
Okay.
I, I'll eat when I get there. I was, uh, on the job at five, five o'clock this morning.
You can, you can have, bring some cake next week from your wife.
Bring cake?
She was making, that seven-layer, whatever that was.
You should've seen the cake she made the other day, boy, it was phenomenal, it was absolutely phenomenal.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend the Community Events Committee membership by Selectman Tropiano, seconded by Selectman Scasiotti, all in favor, say aye. Okay, so we have a motion to amend the Community Events Committee membership by Selectman Tropiano, seconded by Selectman Scasiotti, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero.
Not that I need any more cake.
Oh, you're gonna abstain?
Yeah.
Three zero one.
I am the voting number.
Okay. I mean, there's nobody on there you don't like, right?
No, it's not a problem.
You don't have to abstain, you know?
I just, it's cleaner.
Nah.
Yeah.
That's all.
Uh, I think that pretty much covers it. If you wanna take a quick gander at this, before we vote to close the thing, wanna make sure we don't go oops sometime tomorrow.
We always go oops.
By the way, I just heard, I got a, a thing from the school, they're closing early tomorrow.
Well, that makes Mr. Sullivan...
The high school and the middle school close at 10:00 AM, so kids will be coming home early, so...
Do you wanna make your announcement now?
Uh, try to be prepared, your children are coming home early.
You're gonna make us suffer till tomorrow, is that it?
Yep.
Yeah, it is, but they're gonna get them out early.
Like, I don't know, I guess it counts as a day of attendance, but...
It must count as a day, then.
Yeah, it counts as a day.
Oh, yeah, it counts.
Yeah, so, so long as you show up, if you're there for one minute, it's a school day.
Yeah.
They can count it in one of the 180.
Guessing...
This is okay, Peter, everything in here's been voted on, and I can say...
It looks like it'll be pretty much cleared up by morning.
It's been voted on, but I guess my main question is, is everything we wanted in there?
Um, I don't have anything else loose, there's some things, but we're gonna do for the fall, 'cause we haven't got everything dialed in yet.
That's fine.
It's a little more complicated.
Just making sure there's nothing that we discussed, and...
No.
Okay. All right, um, jumping back, uh, this will be a vote to...
Move to close the warrant.
Close the special town meeting warrant. Motion by Clerk Slavin, seconded by Selectman Tropiano, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Four zero zero, it's closed.
Shut her down. What? She's excited.
I'm getting dirty looks, because the special's bigger than the regular. But I, but I think some of your more interesting articles are on the regular, so time-wise, you'll get through this faster. Well, you can always make a motion to extend. Are you encouraging lengthy debate, Madam Moderator?
I, I just wanna set another record, that's all.
That's all.
Ah!
Oh.
I see.
Well, I, I think really, if you wanna set records, we have to come up with a different category, articles per minute. It's the best way to gauge them. Let me just see if there's anything else.
This is a 48-hour.
48-hour, son of 48-hours, okay. Oh, she left a note for you.
Yeah, she didn't want me to make any doodles on it.
What is it?
Yeah, this is, remember last summer, we authorized, uh, actually, it was in 2016, we authorized, uh, the then-chairman to send a letter to the Army Corps regarding dredging and support dredging, blah, 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 blah. Well, the harbor master is looking for another letter.
Trying to go.
Same letter, but I just wanna authorization to sign the thing.
Move to authorize the chair to send the letter.
Second.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, motion by Clerk, uh, not Clerk yet, Selectman Tropiano, and seconded by Selectman Scasiotti, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero, so that's taken care of. As you know, I don't like to sign things without a vote. I want everybody blamed for it, not just me. Just flip through this one more time, we're all set there, all set there. Next week, we will vote to recommend, uh, the rest of the articles or not to recommend.
'Cause she needs them.
Yeah, she needs them by the end of next week, so we've gotta get that done. Uh, does anybody else have any 48-hour business? Selectman Tropiano, Selectman Scasiotti, Clerk Slavin, I don't have anything, we heard his reports. Nope, do you wanna skip over liaison reports?
No, I'm just waiting for it, just in case.
Okay.
We usually forget it anyways.
Uh, liaison reports, Selectman Tropiano.
Okay, so the only thing, I think you already got that, Peter, that the school building committee wants to come in here next week.
Yeah.
If you can get them on the agenda, I'd be great.
Absolutely.
Okay, and Thursday, we have the, a bunch of things going on Thursday. As you well know, we have the, the event at, um...
Solarnos?
Solarnos, for the candidates' night, but the sewer commissioners will be meeting, too.
And also, the finance committee is meeting with the school.
And they'll be talking about the, um, if anybody's interested, they'll be talking about the sewer article that are coming up on the warrant. So if anybody's interested and wants more information about exactly what's gonna happen, they should get to that meeting. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Selectman Scasiotti.
I'll sit, thank you.
Clerk Slavin.
Just to continue with Patrick, it's really a shame, because the, um, the three candidate, well, the two candidates, actually, probably one of the candidates for school committee who's already in place, obviously may not be able to make the candidates' night because of this.
Yep.
It's just, you know...
I know, Bernie had set this, uh, the FinCom had set this...
Oh, it's not that, it's, it's the school... Yeah, it's, it's not the, it's not the finance committee's fault, Bernie, it's just the way this worked out, so it's where it is. Let's see, the Community Events Committee met Monday, we've got virtually every event, we've got monies assigned all the way through. I think the only one, we're actually waiting on two. Uh, one is Mrs. Whiteside's Corps, uh, which is really unusual, and the Wareham Village Association, which is not unusual. So we have everything else in place, and we'll be able to fund all the, all the events as far as what they've sent and asked for, so it looks good for this coming year. Today, I was in Tottenham this morning through about 3:00, but different syrup head pieces, uh, gave Mr. Sullivan some information ready. We're going to go ahead, it looks like, with the draft, with the Route 6 corridor transportation study, which basically covers Fairhaven, Marion, Matipoiset, and Wareham, and it's gonna look at basically Route 6 as it exists today, and where they can sit down and figure out what they wanna do with the road, there's certain areas in Matipoiset, and in, uh, Fairhaven, where the road has like a bunch of S-curves driving through, and if you have like two pickup trucks driving through there, uh, there's a good chance they're gonna hit each other, just because there's not enough room in the road to make those curves as they go around with a 50 mile an hour speed, and they're probably gonna cut the road at some points down to one lane on each side with a third lane for turning, so you won't have people taking, you know, left-hand turns across and everything else. Uh, this will take into 2019 to do this. Uh, the cost, there's no cost to the towns, it's part of the syrup heads programs that they get money from the state and federal government for. And I believe the total cost of Phase 1 and Phase 2 is about $110,000. So this is going ahead, which is really nice to see. Just as a confirmation, uh, discussed today again was the Wareham Route 6 and 28 project, which now, for that short, half the project from what it originally was, uh, the final cost for the project as of right now is $18,502,466. It is completely funded in 2018, so all the monies are in and done, it's 100%, and it's just a matter of starting. And, uh, I spoke to Pam Hasner, who's the Mass DOT person in charge overall, and they're working to try and find ways to streamline the timeframe of how this gets done, and I'm still waiting on our own, looking at possible mitigation for businesses which may be impacted by it. I don't have anything there yet, I asked the state again tonight, uh, is there any programs, and the, you know, for this, and the answer was no. I was not very happy with the answer. They seemed not to have a, a care about that part of it, which is really wrong. The other piece that we're, have is Mr. Sullivan is doing an RFP for the bike path. Bike path was in 2022, uh, because of timeframes, et cetera, uh, it's been moved back to 2023, for those that are interested in it. And with all the rules and regulations for complete streets, et cetera, uh, a bike path going down narrows and minded out is $5,220,000.
Who's paying for that?
Which, uh, the state and federal got money.
Really?
Town pays nothing.
A million dollars for just that?
Can you believe it? I'm serious.
Seems kind of expensive, doesn't it?
The amount of people who ride bikes in Wareham, that's about 100 bucks a trip.
I mean, it's all the different rules and regulations now.
Wow, that's a lot of money.
It's, I mean, it's...
You should see the one on Mass Ave.
Oh, yeah.
It's, they, they now park cars in front of the bike lane. When people open their car doors, when they get too close, it's like...
Bike's riding into it. Well, the, the Boston bicyclists, especially the couriers in Boston, have run over so many pedestrians, it's probably payback.
Well, you know, I saw a courier go right down the middle on the wrong side of the road, right down the middle of the road, 'cause he wouldn't ride on the bike path.
Yeah.
He's afraid to...
It's safer to go down the yellow line.
It's safer to go down the yellow line.
And the other piece is, uh, GATRA inserted the bus program between Wareham and New Bedford, uh, has been funded, and there's increased funding on that as well. I've also asked today, um, to basically look seriously at getting transportation from Wareham to the Beth Israel Jordan Hospital in Plymouth, 'cause nothing really exists. And the other piece is from Wareham to the Brocton Vet Hospital, which is another problem. So it took four years to get the first one done, so hopefully, these two might be less time. That's it for me.
Okay, uh, I don't think I actually have anything. Uh, we do have authorized payments to law offices of Richard P. Bowen.
Motion to pay for services through 3/2018 for $15,416 and 66 cents.
Since you rehired him, I guess we better pay him.
Yeah, we better pay him, huh?
This is an old bill, so it's okay.